To the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. I have a motion on the minutes, the last two minutes individually, last meeting.
Move that we accept the minutes from the executive session of the last meeting. The work study, I mean.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's been passed. Do I have a motion for the council meeting?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting from November 17th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's been passed as well. Hey, we just had a, an executive meeting which involved making a decision on a position, unemployment position in the town. And do I have any, do you want to talk a little bit?
I do, unfortunately. I've reached out to our attorney who's not here and so I don't have a, an answer on the question that the council asked during the executive session. I apologize. I can't intelligently speak to the ability to...
Right.
Where you want to move forward.
So, Mr. President, Mr. President, I would, I would say that we would table this until the next meeting.
A motion to table it, second? All right, we'll table it.
We'll need a second and probably go ahead and take a vote on that.
A second.
A question. Is, are they going to be here today, the lawyer?
I kind of thought so, but...
Did you say you have a message out to them?
My request to ask if they're going to be here tonight and I've received no response. Like I said, our, our primary attorney has COVID and that's the only contact I had was with him.
Now, I don't know what difference 15 or 20 minutes would make, but should we just wait to see if we get a response before the end of the meeting?
Table it till the end of the meeting if you so choose.
I'll revise my motion. We'll just, if we table this until later.
Yeah.
All right, we'll table it till later.
You have a request to speak, Mr. President.
Approval? What did that? Yeah, public comment. Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. I have a request from Ann Johansson with the Downtown Danville Partnership to speak.
Hello. I didn't get on the agenda fast enough, but I just wanted to give a quick recap of Christmas on the square. Sorry.
Can you state your name because it goes on a recording?
Ann Johansson with Downtown Danville.
We know who you are, but it goes on a recording and when she's typing, she knows who's talking.
Yeah. So, just a quick recap on Christmas on the square. It was a great event, really packed. And I just wanted to publicly say thanks to the Parks Department and Will Lacy and Andy Pitcher and DPW and all that crew. I mean, I couldn't have pulled it off without their help. So, that was a really great collaboration and I'm thankful for them. So, hopefully next time I come before you, I'll have a list of events and a plan for next year and we'll do all of that at once. So, I'm not up here multiple times a year, hopefully. So, that's, yeah, we're planning for next year, starting those meetings and those conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
That's the only request I've had, Mr. President.
All right, you want to go to B?
Yeah.
Assistant Town Manager, request for traffic study engineering. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Barry. All right, so as you see in your packet, as a traffic committee, we were looking at some options. One of the most important things that we were looking at is how can we find out where the traffic is going? So that if we do look to spend money or look to go after projects, we want to know that we're throwing the money in the right place. You know, how can we make the biggest impact? So, the first project there is the traffic engineering. With this, we're going to be able to track and see where the traffic's going. Like if someone's coming in 36, are they leaving 39? If someone's coming in 39, you know, are they switching over to Cartersburg and going out that way? So, that's what this traffic study will do is tell us where the people are going, you know, where the biggest traffic counts are. And then from that, hopefully we can make better decisions with the traffic committee on where to spend the dollars, you know, or where to focus on project-wise. And then the second part of this is banning engineering. Part of that is we talked about, well, how much are these projects going to cost? So, we're looking at banning to do some generic studies on the top four projects that we're looking at and see a guesstimate on how much they think each one of the projects would cost. So then we'll know where the people are going and we'll know how much the project could possibly be. Then from there, we'll get deeper. We've got to meet again after there, once we have the results from these, and start looking at, you know, are these projects a reality? You know, some of these may be more expensive, some aren't actually in our area. So, if, if we could partner with the county or partner with the state to push some of these things forward, that's what we're going to do. So, this is kind of like that first piece of moving forward. So, I did reach out to Horton in their commitments. They committed $50,000 towards traffic studies. And so, that's where I was looking to get this money. I wanted to get your blessing. But I, when I reached out to them, they did respond back and they will pay for it. So, no real out-of-pocket, but it will bring down some of that 50,000. It's like 12,000 and something. So, I was just kind of hoping I could get your blessing to move forward and we'll have these numbers and then we'll have our next traffic meeting after that. They said like three to four weeks to get the traffic numbers. And I think Joe said something like that for him to put together those numbers on what the projects would cost. So, just kind of chugging along. I know it's been a little bit since we met, but the last couple of meetings, there were like a million things on them. And so, it's kind of nice to be able to have a little bit more time. If you want to talk about this or shoot questions at me, feel free.
All right, any questions from you guys?
When will this start?
Probably not till after Christmas break is my guess because of the school calendar. It's three to four weeks, so we want to make sure that we're capturing reality data. You know, we want to make sure school's in session. We want to make sure everybody's going to work, you know, those kind of things.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the request for traffic study and engineering.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney, can you take the role?
Aye.
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 All right, motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is capital expenditure request for school crossing signals. Mr. Public Works.
Good evening. So, I bring to you tonight a capital expenditure request for the rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon crossing signals at, at the school or multiple areas around the school. Brought this to you last meeting for the inter-local agreement and this is the expenditure portion of that. Going to meet with the school board on December 13th to get their portion of the inter-local agreement, but wanted to bring this forward so that as soon as we get this passed, then we can move forward and get these expedited because they are four to six weeks out. So, basically, if this is approved now, we can, we can do it as soon as the, the school approves their side of it. And from what Mr. Winners was saying last time, it sounds like they're, they're on board with it. Just have to go through the formal vote.
Yeah, as far as I can tell.
To do the agreement. So, it, it's at a total cost to the town of $12,389.76 and then the school's going to pick up that same amount on their side.
I'm just curious about something too. I know we, we're going to do this obviously, but how will this, will the process interrupt? Because there are kids that are crossing there now. I think ideally it'd be great if, if we could get it done during Christmas break because there's nobody there, but obviously that's not going to happen. But do we, I guess, is that something that has been or will be discussed with the school to make sure that we're not creating an unsafe environment for those kids while they're, you know, while they're...
It can, we can discuss that as far as logistics go, but honestly, it's, the systems themselves are a matter of boring a hole in the ground with an auger, pouring some concrete and then after that...
So, it can be done in a pretty short period of time.
Yeah, it's going to be, and it's very minimal space needed, so the crossing guards can still do their job, so...
Andy, I, I noticed that there wasn't a signature on this, but I'm assuming that clerk treasurer would, you know, sign off on, oh, it's there. Okay, sorry, not on my copy. I assume the funds are, are there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the department expenditure request.
Second it.
Motion is second. Courtney, please take the role.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mark. Going to tell us about, okay, go ahead. Yep, no problem. Now that you're older, you're a little slower, huh? Anybody wearing a tiara looking like that? I don't know.
Phil, say what you want, but I have lived up to an obligation in my department head. That's all I'm going to say on the matter.
If you could just see the way they're like waving around.
I don't know. Doesn't sound like...
Is there any way to take a five-minute recess, make a phone call?
Sure.
I would say that's a good idea.
Five-minute recess.
Thank you. Allow the town manager to extend an offer to the individual that is recommended by the selection committee.
Second it.
Motion and a second. Courtney, please take the role.
Aye.
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 No.
All right, motion's been passed four to one. Thank you very much. Mark, it's your turn.
So, Chief Roberts was not able to be here tonight due to a meeting. He wanted to report that he had, is it eight, 1,834 runs for the year? 44 runs last week, 347 runs up from last year. They've had two working residents fire assist, a garage fire, water recovery assist in Columbus Township, transported 11 sick persons and assisted fire departments in Hendricks County 10 times on runs. As you, council knows, I was on vacation this last week. I was not able to attend the department head meeting. So, since we do have a short meeting tonight, I'm going to let the department heads come up and give your reports. Thank you.
All right.
Surprise.
Up first.
Mr. President, council members, good evening. Jim Hilton, Danville Police Department, Chief Police. I just want to report that we had a mayor board meeting last week. We met and they gave me the okay to go ahead with the hiring process. So, we're taking applications. If you know any good applicants, please send them our way. The closing is the 10th and we'll do a physical agility written test on the 18th. We partnered with the Danville High School this year. We're going to use their, possibly their gym. It depends on the weather, their track and their cafeteria to do testing. We're hoping to get some good applicants and I don't have a whole lot else going on. I have an executive session coming up Friday with a personnel matter and that's about all I really got going on. I'll take any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Courtney, you want to come up and give your speech?
This week, we were doing lift station checks as we normally do each week. We're still winterizing some of the samplers and making sure all the heaters are on in the lift stations. Today, we did have a tour with IDEM, their department that writes our permit. Two of their folks come out and looked their plan over just to give them a better idea of when they're writing these permits for each town, just what they're seeing and what they're writing for us. So, good, good visit with them. They were really thankful that we allowed them to come in and answer their questions and just general maintenance this week. So, that's where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Sandy.
Good evening again. So, last Saturday, we did participate in the Christmas on the square. We hauled everything up there for DDP, the, the big switch, all the picnic tables. Brought up garbage boxes and then we collected all that stuff at the end of the night, closed down the roads and then reopened them. And then we were tasked with making sure the canopy was lit that night. As far as asphalt goes, seeing a lot of potholes, especially with the moisture we've been having. So, basically spray patching, we're pretty much done with hot mix for the, the year due to, by the time we get done with leaf collection, hot plants will be closed down. We'll be doing spray patching and then cold patch. Down at the shop, we've got the salt brine tanks filled. The school has already used that, that system that we had basically loaned them to spray their parking lots. When it got a little bit chillier a couple of weeks ago, they, they loaded up and they use that. I haven't heard how it worked out, but we do have our tanks full so that the school can use them and then when our spreaders come in, we can load up as well. We did order two pallets of ice melt and then we ordered the, the ice melt for the town hall as well. So, that's already in. We're, we should be set for this winter. Leaf collection did start on Monday. We're scheduled to be completed next Wednesday. As of the first three days, we ran a little bit late on Monday. Going to have to tweak that schedule a little bit. And then today, we were a little bit behind because of the rain, but we have been able to keep on schedule. We haven't had to push any days back. If that, if the weather does become an issue, what we're going to do is we're going to push it back to the end of the schedule and then we'll notify the public. And then we do have two drop-off days, which is this Saturday and next. If people had cars parked on top of them, they didn't get their leaves out, we are opening it up to, we'll have guys in, at the shop on Saturday so they can bring leaves down to us if they were missed. And then as far as mine, my side of things goes, I was finally able to complete the Paser rating, got that submitted. It was submitted and accepted last week, so today was the deadline. So, I got that all accomplished, accomplished. Working on evaluations this week, trying to finish those up so that the guys know by the end of the year what they're looking at for wages. And then I'm still working on Title VI and 88 transition plan. Any questions?
Leaves?
Leaves.
Tree leaves?
Tree leaves. Lots of them.
Yes, we know. So, we were down to one pickup this year.
Yes.
Yeah. I thought possibly maybe instead of going from seven to one, we could go from seven to maybe four. See how that is done, but seems to be a lot of leaves everywhere.
There is.
What are you going to do, the first pickup?
What's that?
When are you going to pick up the leaves?
We started on Monday. So, we've got a, we've got a schedule where we're working our way across town. Tomorrow and, what is today? Tomorrow and Friday, we'll finish up the, the core, the south side. And then we'll work, next week we'll be out on the east side and then next Wednesday will be the completion date. After we get done, I am going to try to bring everything to you guys and just try to go over what we want to do for next year, seeing how it went this year and, and really bringing the numbers as far as what we were able to accomplish by, by cutting it back a little bit. But do want to do an after-action plan with you guys and see where we want to go from here. But so far, we are on track to, to complete on time, so...
Any else got questions for me? Hey, thanks, Courtney.
Thank you.
Ms. Planner, do you want to say anything? Well, heck.
Okay, RDC meets next week. They have, and this will be on the agenda. They have an offer that's been accepted at 195 West Main Street, that corner property. Plan Commission will be meeting on the 13th. The comp plan public hearing is on that agenda. So, look forward to getting public comment on that. Hopefully get it adopted after the first of the year. Haven't received any new applications for annexations recently. Working on address assignments. And also, I wanted to let you know, I found a few old maps in our little storage room and I've scanned them. One is a corporate boundary map from 1929. And then I found the 1963 zoning map, so...
29, what, we have 35 houses?
I didn't count them actually, but it's, it's not a very big area, but it's, it's really pretty cool. If you ever want to come by the office, I've got the maps in there. It's kind of neat to go back and find historical data. So, that's it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Hey, Barry.
Well, as usual, I have a lot to talk about, but I'll keep it short. The biggest thing is, is I had a contractor out today. We walked the roof on Hargrave Gym and it's going to need replaced sometime soon. There are several rips that are four inches long, so they'll be out this coming week to repair as much as we can. Hopefully, we can get through 2023 so that we can plan to pay for it. Hopefully, it, it will last that long, but we'll see how that works out. If you know, you may, you probably noticed that on East Main Street, we're doing some shoulder work for A-cell, D-cell lanes and a passing lane at Beasley's and Woodland Terrace. We're having a little bit of issues with soil conditions. They're really spongy and then it's not conducive to good pavement placement. As well as Woodland Terrace, they're putting the final touches on the last part or last section of that. They've got 17 permits in Iowa's right now, but we're waiting to approve those until we get an access road for public safety. We also did six new single-family dwellings in the month of November. All the developments are going strong. We're really close on Section 3 at Kensington. Northwood Haven got a storm crossing done today. So, really busy. Adam's doing locates this week to try to help out, alleviate some manpower for the leaf pickup and he may be doing it the, the first part of next week as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
How much did it cost to repair, to replace the roof?
So, that part over there is much smaller than what we did on Bostick. The, the main area on town hall was 247,000. The Bostick Gym was 99,000. So, I didn't want to spitball a number, but probably anywhere from 50 to 75 for Hargrave, the roof on the stairs and then the roof over the boiler room. And then the entire building would be completely covered and we should be good for 30 to 50 years. We'll see how that works, but we'll try to get it planned out so that we can plan for the payment. Try to get it through to 2023, but I don't, I'm not holding my breath on that because it's in bad shape.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Will. Oh, I see the water department back there. No, it's okay. He can come after you. I just didn't see him hiding.
All right, so I sent out the like prelim for the master plan. Dive into that. There's some interesting stuff in there. It's kind of cool. So, hopefully, he is reaching out to DNR to see when they want to approve it, but we'll probably approve it probably more towards January. It'll get rep, like passed by the park board and then it'll go to you guys and then you guys pass it and then it'll be our plan for the future. So, I'm super excited about that. Lot of, lot of input from the public and some good, some bad, just learning different things, but it's also part of the process and we're going to push forward and try to follow what the citizens want. So, that's what it's all about. We're keeping Winterland alive, of course. Good start to the season. We've been doing some marketing for Winterland as well, working on a staffing calendar for, you know, end of year vacations and stuff like that. Just trying to make sure everything's staffed. We're looking at purchasing an RTV soon, so that'll be coming your way probably in the next week or two. Starting to prep for snowplow stuff and then winter maintenance, we started on that, so... And, let's see here, something else I was going to bring up too. Oh, windows? Yes, the windows are finally, after three years, are being installed around Bostick Gym. Barry and I have been working on that. That, I mean, it really feels good to have that happen because we've been working on that project for a long time with contractors quitting on us and changing and then new contractors coming out. We finally sealed the deal and they look great too. So, once they finish them, it'll be really nice. Then also the awning, the, the guys just called me one day and said they're coming in to do a final measurement. So, me and Barry met with them and they said if the installer likes us, it'll be ready in four weeks. But if not, they're going to push us back to, to eight weeks. So, we got a little bit of prep work to do where Barry and I are going to work with our staff and try to get some of the prep work done so that we have no more costs involved with it. But those two are probably going to end up, you know, happening on the same day and then Barry's going to get the doors painted sometime within there too. So, we're, I have a brand-new kind of face on that side of the building. So, it's super exciting. Not only that, but Barry's really happy about the R-value of that area as well. So, kind of sealing up that envelope he always talks about, so...
Okay. Any questions for Will?
Also, I'd just like to thank Ann for, she's in here, for all the work that she's done too. So, you know, kind of taken over that position, her first Christmas on the square. Lot of changes in there and, and she's done a really good job of trying to like balance everything at one time. So, really good crowd. Santa was happy, I heard, so that's all that matters. Thank you.
You're welcome. Here he comes. I didn't see you hiding back there.
Oh, I wasn't hiding. The, the guys have been out reading water meters this week. One guy's been off, be off Monday and he'll be off Friday, so that slowed us down, plus the weather, it rained today. Today, we put in seven water meters out Kensington, I believe. And yesterday had a, a local contractor damaged a one-inch tap at Section 2 of Camden Creek. I assisted them getting that repaired. Luckily, there's no homes there yet, so nobody was out of water and reading meters. And we're trying to wrap up some of the things for, and be prepared for the first of the year. So, I'll be coming out with some capital expenditure requests after the first year. We're just tidying up things for the end of the year right now. Enjoying the weather. Pump plants not running there is hard, so nice. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Before I do mine, you've got one more department head, community engagement coordinator.
Sorry, I didn't know that was department. We'll have to add you to the government thingy. Do we pay this department? Well, there's your point.
Um, so what am I supposed to say? My name's Madison Henderson, I'm the community engagement coordinator. So, it's been a very exciting times around Danville. So, this week we are, I've been working on leaf pickup. So, I've been out there taking videos and pictures of all the DPW crew and what they're doing, what that looks like. So, that's been quite an adventure. I have my own green vest now, so when I go, I can be safe and get some good shots for everybody. I'm working on Winterland posts as well, just getting advertisement out. I've been accepted into a lot of the other chatter pages from other towns, so I can tell everyone about Winterland and what's going on, not just in Hendricks County, but all over. I'm working with Barry this week. We're officially going to get together and talk about the permit process and what people need when they want a permit. Just, we're planning ahead for the spring, so when it's time for people to start building, they know what they need. Let's see, I'm working on headshots, so we have, I'm setting up an area so we can do our own headshots here for the town. So, I'll probably be giving all of you a call once it's all set up and I'm feeling confident about it. I'm starting, I met, talked to the department heads this week about cold weather tips from the water department, wastewater, just to put that information out there for the community. And then I am working with the police department on promoting their, the hiring process. So, they did walk me through some of the physical agility training today, so...
So they did walk me through some of the physical agility training today, so you'll get to see that on Facebook. And I did actually pass the vertical jump, so I, I, you know, I can do that, so I'm excited. Any questions for me?
Will you be moving on in the interview process then?
I don't know. No, no.
Yes, you can go now. Thank you very much. Okay, Mark.
The clerk treasurer's asked me to request a change of our last meeting date for 2021. We have it scheduled for December the 29th at 5:30. She's wanting to know if we can move that to December the 30th. Due to, that is a payroll week, and so to actually be able to close out the books, we need the extra day, if that's okay. That's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday?
Yeah, it's a Thursday instead of a Wednesday. And so I'm seeking council consensus to, to change that date. I'll notify the press if this is what, I mean, obviously they're here, but we'll still make official notification.
I have a question, sorry. Is it, it's not, I may not be here either the 29th or the 30th. That's not an issue as long as we have a quorum, right?
Quorum, it shouldn't be an issue, and if you choose to call in, obviously, we, we've provided provisions for that to occur as well.
I may do that, depending on if I'm on the road. Grant has a tournament out somewhere on the east side.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I am too.
Uh-oh.
I guess we have nobody.
I, I could, I could call in. I could call in.
If, if the quorum, now, didn't we say that we had to have three physically present?
Have to reread the ordinance, but I believe that's correct.
Is that you guys for the week or just for that day?
I'm out all week.
For me, it's just during, I may be back. I don't know what time.
Well, we'll have to see as we get closer.
We'll, I'll research the ordinance to double-check and, and I'll report back to you. So I guess the question for tonight though is, for the two of you that may be here, would moving it to the 30th be an issue?
If, if it's two and if the treasurer's here, would that be three?
I believe it's part of your quorum, sir. It's the council members.
All right.
So.
Well, we'll keep a, keep a finger around this.
Is okay, or, because again, it, it really, I think it's important to the operation for the payroll.
And it's hard to get it sooner?
Can we meet at the 31st at say 11:30 at night? Anybody doing anything?
I have no life. I'd be, I mean, I'm sitting here in a meeting wearing these things on my head. You think I've got big plans for New Year's, you know, so. But honestly, I mean.
Oh, I'm, I was kidding.
I mean, we could meet, if, if the 31st was an option for any of you, we could meet during the day if she's available. I, I haven't talked to her about her schedule. She just wanted to see if we could move it to, to the 30th.
To answer your question, Mark, that does look stupid on your head.
Word, that's all I can say, sir.
Anything else from you, Mark?
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm seeing if I can get info while I'm sitting here, but I'll, I'll find out.
I'll, I'll, I'll research our ordinance and then.
Cause we're not staying overnight anywhere. Or maybe a one o'clock game. Not about me.
Okay, so we might have something.
Okay, so, but I can let her know that once we research this, we'll figure this out. Is that correct?
Okay. Wonderful. That's about it. Claim dockets? Do I have a motion?
Oh, make a motion to approve the claim docket.
Do I have a second?
Oh wait, we didn't go around the horn with that.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, that's what you were doing.
Was, what, Mark, were you, were you finished?
I believe I am, yes, sir.
All right.
Wait a minute. Yes, I am.
Yes, you are, okay.
What do you have?
Well, first, I just want to wish Mark a happy birthday. I'm, I'm glad to, you know, see you're well-rested from Florida, coming back. That's awesome.
My, my plane was delayed. I got in at two o'clock this morning, to be honest with you, so I'm actually pretty tired.
Well, that explains why you're wearing the headdress there, so. I, I had, I had just a quick question about redistricting. I know that, that was, I think, in Mike Nielsen's classroom, and I just wanted to see if there was an update on that.
So as it turns out, we, we actually don't, the way we vote, we don't have to actually produce a redistricting map. We are going to have to produce a, um, new ward maps. And under our own ordinance, we're under no hurry. We can get it done next year. We're okay to go.
Okay.
So, um, um, one of the questions that was presented when we discussed this was, if we do all at-large voting, why we had the wards? And the, the answer basically is, is that way, five people, and again, in Clear Creek can't sit in their garage and say, let's all run for this, these offices and then pour all the funds into their subdivision. That's why we have the ward representation.
And then the second question was, our, uh, enforcement officer had came and talked to us about some parking ballards and stuff like that for some of the parking issues. I think that he was also doing some more research on some other options, so I was wondering if there was any update from.
I don't have any update from him right now.
Okay.
I'm sure that I can, he's pretty thorough. If I ask him, I'm sure he'll come up with 16 pages worth of stuff.
Well, I just hadn't heard anything, so I thought I wanted to follow up, so. Uh, thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, I, I thought Friday was great. The, uh, Christmas on the square, it's always a good time, always look forward to it. My parents drove up from Southern Indiana to participate, so that was nice to see them. And I was curious, is there any way to gauge, maybe the fire department doesn't want us to? How many people, any way to estimate how many people show up to that?
Fortunately, I was in Florida and was not in attendance, and the nice thing about open-air environments, there's no occupancy rating that would apply.
I'm, and I wasn't concerned about that. I was just curious, just what, you know, it's a pretty popular event.
I only know that from a previous occupation, I apologize.
Oh, oh, okay. I didn't know.
Ann's already left. I don't, I honestly don't know. Madison?
I'd say at least a couple thousand, maybe three.
That's an industry technical term, is a lot.
A lot, okay.
Very precise.
And that's all I had on that. That, I, I, I just love this time of year, especially in Danville. I have confirmation from my real boss that I would be available the morning of the 30th. Um, cause I'm already taking the day off from work, so. First game is at one o'clock. Yeah, if that works for everybody else.
It's fine.
Okay.
Morning meeting?
Since I missed last year's end-of-year meeting too, or did we have one? I don't remember. Um, how long do those typically last? Yeah, okay.
It just depends on, yeah, I, I don't know what she tends to have on the, if their encumbrance is on there.
Sure.
Mostly.
Thirty minutes or less, okay. And I'd say 10 o'clock, 10 or 10:30 would be the latest.
Need meeting. Got already sort of the board for take it off of you.
Okay.
When's our Christmas party?
Seventeenth.
We'll be putting out probably by the end of this week, we'll put out. Secure enough funding.
That's it. Christopher.
I just want to say happy birthday. And reiterate, Friday night, that was amazing event that everybody that was involved, thank you for that. And then back to Winterland at the park, you saying you're getting the word out there. I was out in Park County last week working and one of the individuals I was talking to said, yeah, people on the, and around town here have been talking about that. So you're doing a good job. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
And one other thing.
Oh.
I'd like to thank Ann Johansson. Ann put all, I know she's not here, but she put all these decorations along with Lisa and Tasha and in the hallway, and so I appreciate all the work you guys did to make Town Hall look very nice.
Yeah, Friday was an excellent day. Square was packed. That was really good. Well, I guess that's about it. Nobody else has got anything?
Make a motion to approve the claim docket.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's been passed.